Order. You want to join me in the blood?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
And would you do a roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Alderman Dobbs.
Here.
Alderman Fahey.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Bennett.
Here.
Alderman Edman. Alderman Steiger.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Mayor, we have a form.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will look for approval of tonight's agenda.
We approve.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? With that, we will skip down to the city administrator's report.
So the report that was included with the panic, I have not updated, but I will highlight a few items. Item two, minimum wage increase after the beginning of the year. The city's policy has been to follow that minimum wage and increase it, even though governments are exempt from that. So we've got two employees that will qualify for that that are over at the Walcom Center. So that will be reflected on their paycheck starting the time sheet as of January 1st. And then beginning May 1st is one hour of paid time off for illness, sick time. That's also part of that Proposition A that passed. So I just want to let you be aware of that. We will cover that. We're fine on what we have in the budget for salaries for that position. Item three, we're planning on Monday, January 20th, to go live with our new website and the phone app. A little bit of fine tuning will continue between now and then. We've got most of the pages built. There's still some stuff we want to put on there. After we get it launched, you'll probably see other things you'd like to be, you'd like to have put on there. So we'll just keep working on it. We'll have accessibility to it. All department heads have been showing how to work with it. And we'll agendas, minutes, all this stuff will be able to be accessed by staff to put it on the website. Facebook page will be live on the site as well. We'll have news articles we can put in there. I think you're going to be impressed with what it's able to do as long as we, as long as we get on there, what we need to get on there for, for those that are going to visit it. And then item six, it looks like our protest bonding will go out at the end of February or early March. It'll be ready for March 13th or beginning of April. So we are working through the preliminary statement to get it put out there. And then we can bring it to the board for approval. That'll be about the time. We're also approving the engineering and getting ready for the road improvements that'll start April, May, probably heaviest in the summer because a couple of the roads, the biggest projects are on roads to the school. They want to make sure that's done when school is not in session. So any questions?
It's been a minute. I don't remember how much sick time we accrued now. Is this, is this, is this more generous or less generous than what we allow for now on the sick time?
So for part-time, we don't.
So this is just, just pertains to part-time?
Part-time, yeah. So full-time, you get a day, half a day every paycheck. Yeah.
Six hours.
Six hours, I'm sorry, six hours. So it's 12 hours that you get a month or 12 hours a year. No?
No, 12 hours a month.
12, okay. Because we can save up to 720.
Right.
So but first, part-time, we haven't done it. That hasn't been a perk that we've offered. Also, that will be included with all of our part-time employees now. At 30 hours, you get an hour of sick pay.
Going back to your repaving for the bid process for the repave, are you putting it all out at one time or are you trying to do sections? Or how are you putting out the bid process for the street repave?
So we haven't narrowed it down. I haven't got everything fully from the engineer yet, but we're looking at multiple phases. But multiple phases in a two-year, three-year timeframe. So the first year will be anything that we don't have to worry about water lines, sewer lines, anything that's underneath, that we're looking at trying to replace or repair in the future. So those will be the first ones to look at. And then the second year, we'll try to see if we can figure out a way to raise money to work on the water lines, sewer lines that we need to, mostly water lines, get those replaced, and then we can do the next year of paving. We have two separate sections of this. You've got asphalt and you have concrete. So usually it takes one contractor or another, but it'll also be broken up that way. And we're looking at brochure street between North Fourth Street or South Fourth Street and 61, trying to make that concrete. Instead of going back with asphalt, we want to put in a concrete road, make it look like portis and pine, and how well those have held up, especially with all the traffic that traverses that road. So but that had, that's a road that has a water line that needs to be replaced underneath.
But we didn't do that last night?
Oh, not in that section. We haven't done anything on there.
Last time they repaved that, then came in and put the water line afterwards. And that's why there's so many spots when, it was only a few months after we paved it, they had to do something with the water line.
And it must, yeah, so it must not have replaced, and it's a four-inch line, so it has become a six-inch PVC is what we look at.
And then progress parkway agreement from them, have they sent us a rough draft yet?
I'll jump in there. So I, it's in my inbox. You'll have it in your inbox waiting for you. So they confirmed with me, Jeremy from McBride texted me today and said, just sent it to you. So so we'll just get it on to Happy and then pass it on.
Anything else?
I have one thing, Happy, could we approach somewhere and stuff? I guess one of the questions I ran into most was plowing up the streets and plowing, you know, the end of people's driveways. The city is not responsible, you know, for that and stuff. It's each individual homeowner's responsibility. We can't go back and open up everybody's driveway. It's not the city's responsibility. Can we make that clear, especially in times like this where we've had and expecting more, some note to where people are aware of that?
We can put it out on our Facebook page and then.
Yeah, something just.
We haven't gotten a lot of complaints in this last ice storm, but most of that was ice and not snow. When you get the heavier snows, that's when you see the piles in front of people's driveways. But yeah, it's just, we don't have time to do that. We're going to try to plow the rest of the city.
And I see, and I don't know, this balls on here, but Alliance isn't giving a, it's not their meeting to do an update, but are we going to get an after-action report for this storm event for them as far as man-hours and tons of salt and things like that? Is that something that they've done in the past?
I don't think we've had that in the past. It may have been part of the report saying that they did the plowing, but we can ask for that. And you're going to have another event tonight, so you might as well save it until the next report anyway.
Well, it'd be good to keep them separate because they're isolated. I mean, they're days apart, so amount of hours that they did and extra overtime hours and pre-treatment and all that. I thought they used to give us some reports on that as far as storm events.
We're reporting this due to salt.
Salt, how much tonnage?
Yeah. And we don't do pre-treatment. We didn't do it for this because it was freezing rain before the sleet, before the snow. So it would have washed all the salt off the road, so we didn't do that.
I saw Mo-Got did, I guess, did some pre-treatment on some of theirs.
And we've been, we, there's been vehicles out. Alliance has been working continuously since Sunday. So yeah, we're, you want to isolate it to one incident, but we're still working through that and getting to the next one. So.
I've got a lot of phone calls, like probably everybody else has, about driveways being blocked, roads being bad. And I didn't know if anybody was going to speak to that because it was a really tough event, right? I mean, you had freezing rain, then you had some snow, and then some thawing, and then more snow and ice. So I mean, it was a really tough event. Stuff is hard to move. You know, some of the streets, like Cherry and Spruce and Point Base, and I mean, they don't even park willing, some of them don't even look like they've been touched. But I understand why because you just, you get out there with a pick and you can't move some of that stuff. So it's, I was hoping maybe Alliance would speak to that because a lot of people are disappointed with the way the streets look, but it's, there's a, there's a reason for it. I mean, it's not like they weren't, you know, trying to aggressively go after it.
I didn't run into any negative comments. In fact, all that I got was positive, you know, knowing people understood the reality of the storm. And it was extremely unique.
Yeah.
But so I think they did a great job.
I agree.
Anything else for city administrator? Okay. Thank you, Happy. This time, we will move down to staff reports. First up tonight, we will have assistant city administrator David Bova.
Good evening, everyone. My report there, you'll notice Heritage Commission, they'll meet again the 27th. Those meetings are moved in January and February, a week later than normal. I wanted to let you know that 2024 Historic Preservation Grant application, that's been there for a few months now. SHPO, State Historic Preservation Office is running behind a little bit, but I did get an email from them that they're putting the final touches on the grant contract. So hopefully we'll see that here soon. Under Building Department, we had talked about updating the building code to 2021. That is planned for the January 23rd agenda, that meeting or the next one. So you should see that soon. The Comp Plan Committee that we formed about four months ago will meet again tomorrow at 3 o'clock. Planning on zoning obviously meant last week approved a recommendation for a special use permit for an RV park at 198 Front. You'll see that on the agenda here shortly. Really all I ever, the only other thing I have, it's not on the report, is we worked with the St. Jen High School to form an internship program. I've reached out to some of you. Obviously, that did not kick off this week, but will kick off next week and run through a semester that students will spend some time here, some time with some elected officials that I've reached out to, and then go through each department, spending time with clerk, treasurer, tourism, public works, police, fire. So it's a program we hope to look to have success with and duplicate in the future. That's all I got. If you have any questions.
Thank you, David.
Thanks.
Next up tonight, we will have Chief Steiger, Fire Chief Steiger.
Good evening, everyone. Should have copied my report. Probably the biggest thing to talk about is our manpower has remained steady. We haven't lost any recently, haven't gained, but we haven't lost any. We're holding steady at 25 right now. The hose that was approved at the last meeting has been ordered. I do not have a delivery date yet on that. And I started to work on the Firehouse Subs Foundation Grant for new extrication tools. Hopefully, I'll have that done in the next couple of days. And we did end up the year at 258 calls, which is down a few from last year, which is a good thing. But we're still pretty busy for a small-town department. Be open to any questions.
Kenny, I know since Erica is here and stuff, we wanted to bring this up. In the past, we've always had this issue about fire hydrant inspections and flow rates and stuff. How are we, what are we still missing?
I don't know. In the past, we've never really shared information. It was all, the water department was kind of on their own. And when we had ISO come in and ask for the stuff, he would, the previous manager would come in and say, what do you need? And then get the information and send it directly to ISO. So I really have no idea where we're at on it. I have asked at a couple department head meetings when the previous manager was here, and I got excuses and that they were doing the best they could, and they were trying to do X amount. ISO actually wants every hydrant in our system checked once a year and maintenance records of them showing that they're checked.
Happy, is that something we can kind of bring front and center and get this done? I mean, I don't know who else sat on that ISO meeting for several hours. I did, and I'm telling you, anybody who doesn't think that's critical as far as our homeowner's insurance is wrong. I know I've had comments from actually some people on this board that it's not, it is important. It is a governing agency that has a lot of power, you know, and it's something that, you know, this thing of not being able to get the information and stuff, and since Eric is here, I mean, we make a point. I mean, I know they're busy now, and now's not the exact time. But I mean, we really need to get this done and get this over with. We beat this thing for how many years?
A couple. And Bob, I smell opportunity here. Like, can we get two work orders in place? And when I talk about work orders, I mean, actually, get the work order in place and then how it lines up with priorities, that's a separate issue. But without the first step of the work order, you don't go anywhere. So maybe pressure test is a work order that goes on. I'd like to see that on your report. I might like to see it on your report. And then color coding the fire hydrant is the second half of that. And anybody who thinks it's not critical, turn on CNN, Fox News, and look at LA and tell me if.
Eric, I didn't mean, I don't know if you're aware of this, or I didn't mean to blindside you if you weren't and stuff, but it's, it's just another piece of the puzzle there that needs to be done and stuff. And we've talked about it, talked about it.
In our last ISO report, whenever you look at the ISO, the fire department gets rated for 50%, the water department for 40%, and dispatch for 10%. Out of 40 points capable, in the water department, we had up with 27.25 last audit. So a little over half of what we were, had available to us. But I don't know what they were lacking because it was never relayed to me what happened. The records were sent straight to ISO, and I was out with one thing.
So I was not familiar with this, but I will, I will say I agree this is a priority and we'll commit to get what's needed. I can't speak to what happened in the past, but I recognize as a priority, we'll make it happen.
Right. Thank you.
I mean, so can, can you two get a work order number from Happy? And then we track it on each of your reports. We'll hear a status every meeting at that point.
Yes.
So that'll be good.
Yeah, I realize the timing now is tough, you know, but just so we get something in the works for sure in the future to get this done.
Yeah.
Nobody points to the fire department kit on that ISO?
We ended up, if, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, I think we ended up with about 38. But a lot of that has to do with the manpower and availability and number of training hours. And being the fact we're volunteer, we only train one night a month. So the only way we're going to improve on the manpower and those numbers is to have more people available and to have more trainings. But being 100% volunteer, it's hard to commit two or three nights a month for training, plus all the family things, everything that's going on.
But we were above the national average, I think, as far as fire departments.
Yeah, I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but Class 4 is, I forget how many fire departments there is. We're in the upper third of the fire departments statewide as far as the ISO rating that we have in the city. And at one time, we were even with Perryville, Festus, and Farmington, all being a four. But since that time, Farmington and I believe Perryville have moved to threes. But Perryville has like three stations and some other things going on. And Farmington, that obviously has a full-time fire department.
But thanks.
Any other questions for Chief Steiger?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And last up tonight, we've got our tourism director, Aaron Smith.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you guys after the holidays. You'll see a couple of different referendums kind of coming up. One, the TTC went ahead and okay to purchase for a seven-foot by 14-foot hay wagon for $750 that we want to modify with some branding and rent out to people in events in town to put bands on. I know Happy could probably tell you more of the details, but I know we'll have to carry some insurance for that. But the idea is that when people rent from us, they have to give us a proof of insurance. And when they take it over, it's under their insurance. Just storage, maintenance, I mean, I don't think it's going to be that much. And I think it's a great idea to have something unique in town that we can kind of hang our hat on and put some more city branding on. I think it'll be a cool thing. The other thing you'll see is I'm going for a bunch of different grants to put more quality historical markers in town. The one grant I'm going for right now is called Hungry for History. It'll get, it'll give us a big bronze heavy sign talking about the history of liver dumplings. I want to put that outside of the old brick in one of the little planters that the city owns. And I think the only thing we need is an okay to put it there. But we have a couple of those signs outside of the cemetery and one inside the cemetery. They're just, they look great. And we qualify for so many of those, so you'll probably see a few of these come across your desk as we, as we go through the year. They give out a Legends and Lore grant. Would love to see something about the James Gang bank robbery and a big sign would be nice. And then they give us one for being a National Historic District. And the fact that we don't have that right now is a missed opportunity. The rebrand has gone to the design phase, so they've kind of come to us with some slogans. And we've moved past that. We're in the design phase. Black Top Sailor sent one of their, their graphic designer down. He stayed here walking around, getting different design elements. So we should see that by the middle of the month. I think January 10th was our original date. I'd like to push that back a month. I'll say by February 10th, we'll have a new brand to roll out. After the designing phase, we'll have a kind of a get-together with all of the stakeholders, business owners, people in town, and kind of roll it out and get some good buy-in, and that'll be that. I have a few other things that I, kind of a holdover from last meeting. So if you want to ask any questions on those, you can. Joe had asked me to do a year-end review for TTC, so I have that in the report. One of the things I wanted to talk about, we got Placer AI. It's one of the things where we can track the metrics of what's going on in town. One of the cool things about that is you can kind of geofence an area. So I geofenced all the downtown businesses and found out from 23 to 24, we're, we're up 5,000 visitors. So that's an increase of 9%. So that's, that's good to know. And that's without having, you know, the marketing campaign that we have going with McDaniel's right now. Not a lot of consistency, so I expect bigger gains as we, as we continue down this path. Any questions?
A little concerned about this hay wagon thing and the city's liability there. Personally, I wouldn't have picked a hay wagon because of the amount of height they are off the ground and people accessing and getting up on there. And two, any type of handrails or, I don't know, a lot of questions there, a lot of liability there. And, you know, whether we're going to have any flashing lights on here. Somebody has one here in town. I've seen it up by the old Bosler Funeral Home, and it's set up for that. But I don't know, I'd have a lot of questions here, especially if we're going to assume the liability.
Well, we have the liability and we have the responsibility of setting it up and hauling it wherever it needs to go and coordinating that with whoever's requested it, so.
Is this something they asked us about before they did it or?
I mean, I gave my opinion at the meeting, which was negative, but.
It was kind of an approval in lieu of your decision. We knew it was going to go up to the board, so they approved it, you know, waiting for your subsequent approval.
We had a lot of discussion on it at the tourism, and then that's why we brought it here to the board. The tourism committee approved it and then to send here to us to have us approve the purchase.
Yeah, and, you know, Happy sent me, so, you know, even to get it insured, the insurance company sends you kind of a, this is what we'd like to see, you know, so handrails, how are people getting on and off this thing? How are you chalking the wheels? You know, so this is all things that are up for consideration. So, you know, obviously, we'll follow that so that we can get it insured and, you know.
Pretty familiar with hay wagons, and there's two types of steering mechanisms. One's not very reliable whatsoever, and the other one is more reliable. So anyhow, just a word of caution.
No, absolutely.
Bob, you feel like these are things we can't overcome? Like, is it, is it at that level where we need to consider that or?
Speaking frankly, I would have bought a hay wagon, period.
Well, we hadn't bought, that's tonight.
I would have liked a load trailer, you know, something that's two feet off the ground rather than four feet off of the ground. But.
Any, any reason to table this then when this comes to that point of the meeting or?
I'm just one opinion, but there's seven more.
Just to clarify, is that meant to like move? Is this meant to move like in a parade or is it meant to?
Oh, no.
Stationary stage, okay.
Yeah, just be a stage, a movable stage, and we can pull it.
That's kind of what I thought when I read it in the.
But, yeah.
I just didn't, I was clarifying.
I'm fine with the idea. It's just the type of mechanism used is.
No, I think, I mean.
No questions.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's, it's good to hash that out.
But if it's stationary, does that address the majority of your concern or do you still have concern?
Well, there's a lot of different types, you know, that you can end up with. But like you said, the height, the steering mechanism are the two.
The steering mechanism, I can see. I mean, you know, I've seen what some of those are, and it's like when you think about kind of backing something in like that, it seems a little.
It's centered as a straight action and stuff, and some individually on the wheel and stuffs. Right, there's a big difference.
Other questions?
So I was going to ask you a little bit, so will the Visit St. Jen, Visit Widget website kind of come out at the same time? The city's government website, are you guys going to be close?
We're coordinating because there's two separate groups.
Yeah, okay.
Two separate groups, but yeah, it's going to be close. We're in the first round, kind of the first round there. They're fulfilling my first round of sort of reviews. So they've sent me a mock. I went through it and I went eh, 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 do this, do this, do this. So they're, they're working on that. Visit Widget's completely done. So all they have to do is plug that in. And we have the event, the event widget basically as well. So that's, that's all done. So Visit Widget's fulfilled their part now. It's just our webmasters, you know, getting things. And again, I don't want to roll something out that's like half this. But we do have enough in the coffers to, you know, get them to do maintenance on it as we go, so.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you, Aaron. At this time, we will open up the floor to public comment.
Bob Brownie, I got two comments. First of all, I'd like to thank Corey and his street crew. They did an outstanding job on the streets. I mean, they were out there all night long working. I mean, they did an excellent job. My second comment isn't so good. On Alderman Fahey project he's got down there with the RV park, I'm 100% against it. So are a lot of other people for simple reasons. At least two other people tried to do the same thing, but on a smaller scale. One was told it'll take away parking from other people. The other person said, no, he was denied because of being in the flood zone. I think Alderman Fahey's project fits both of those categories. People during the jury defect and other functions, they park down there, okay? He's in the flood zone. Where he wants to put it is in buyout property. And that little house he bought, he wants to turn that into a laundry mat. Now, if that's going to happen, people's going to be breaking in at nighttime to sleep, breaking in at nighttime to steal coins. This whole project, just, I'm totally against it. It's not, it's unfair. If he's allowed to do it, I think something should be checked into because other people were denied. And I don't think Alderman Fahey should have carte blanche on doing whatever he wants to do. That's my input on it. I hope you guys listen to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brownie.
I wanted to take this opportunity to share my celebration of being one year back in the States and specifically in St. Genevieve. And I think it's, I really, I really, I really like clean water coming in and black water going out. And it's because of your attention to detail, it really happens. Clean water goes in, black water goes out, and electricity, although I did have electricity all week with the ice, and I really appreciate that. And specifically St. Genevieve, I tried other towns further north and the county further north. And honestly, St. Genevieve was nice. You guys are just nice. You can walk down the street and I don't have to be so concerned about my pepper spray in my hand. I can walk down the street and once I even had, forgot my cell phone in the car. And in a panic, I ran out to the car, and my car was still there, the windows were still there, and the phone was still inside my car. And the safety and security, I, you can tell when you go somewhere, it's, it's nice. It's nice and it's a good place to live. And, yeah. to live. And yeah, living in the United States is, that in itself is a real privilege. But here in St. Genevieve, I really appreciate it. I appreciate all your attention to detail and those little things that, you know, people, yeah, they take for granted and they complain because you have to shovel your driveway and I, you know, I don't know. I thought I was supposed to do that. And I was the only one out there shoveling my driveway. But anyway, it's, it's nice. And, and you know, I still hold fast that, yeah, I came back because it's not hot and there's food here. And I, very simple to please, but I appreciate you guys. Attention to detail and it, it works. It works. And people are happy when the infrastructure but works, but they don't know they're happy until all of a sudden something breaks and then they're really not happy. But yeah, I appreciate you guys. And I hope I speak for a whole lot of other people, not just one voice, but I think, I think I do. I think they all appreciate more than what they say. They're just kind of used to it. And thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Teddy Ross. I live in Valley Springs. I got one comment about this hay wagon. I don't know what the driver is on it. Is there the demand out there? Are there, are there people actually wanting to rent a hay wagon? The size of it, I don't know how many people they expect to be in the van. It's not that big, you know? If you compare it to the Audubon with the stages, it's smaller than that. So I think there has to be more answers. There's a lot of questions out there of why we need this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
My name is Sam Huey. Live on North 6th. Like to add Teddy's comment on the hay wagon. Was the first with a question. Anybody here know how to back up a wagon?
I would say yes.
Okay. How many people that come want to borrow that, rent it, can maneuver it?
Well, I think they said that that would be the responsibility of the city, which is another problem.
It's up to the board on that, but I would think you'd be in control of something like that.
I just want to say, it would be enough, something to think about with your liability. Somebody gets it and can't handle it, backs it into somebody's car, you know, you've got an issue there. And I agree with Bob totally. As a musician, you don't want to be that high off the ground. Equipment can fall off. People can fall off. I'm all for the smaller trailer. That's perfect. As for the one in the parking lot you were addressing, that's the Muni Band's trailer. And that has fixed seating for the band to sit on. But a trailer similar to that would be good. You would be closer to the ground and much easier for somebody to maneuver. So that's, that's kind of my take on that. You turn somebody loose with a farm wagon, 16-foot farm wagon, if they don't know something about it, we all know what's going to happen there. So, so that's, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huey. Any other public comment at this time?
Okay. Move, move on to tonight's consent agenda. Just a quick comment on Resolution 2025-11. Is that something we never had before or?
We never consolidated. And this is a, instead of having three different credit cards for gas, we were going to go with one credit card for that purpose and, and be strictly for that, you know, for, for the vehicles and for filling it with gas and then save for automotive purposes only.
This would be passed out to multiple people?
Each car would have one. And we have, so that would be 11 or 12 vehicles for the police department and one vehicle for the building department.
But you can still track which vehicle?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Yep.
That's all we got.
Good job, Fred.
Second. Okay. I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay. At this time, the mayor and the board of Alderman, the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider a request from Patrick Fahey, Main Street Inn LLC for a special use permit to operate an RV park business at 198 Front Street, St. Genevieve, Missouri. That includes the yard and field and surrounding house. The property is currently located in an I-1 light industrial district. We are going to open this public hearing at 6:35.
So the application was received December 13th, 2024. Filing fee received same day. Notice of meeting mailed to applicants on December 16th, 2024. Also mailed to adjoining property owners on the 16th of 2024. The list of adjoining property owners is in your staff packet. Application was sent to the police and fire department on December 13th. Both fire and police returned no issue on December 16th. Meeting notice was mailed to media on December 27th for publication on 12/24. Recommendation of planning and zoning, which occurred last week on January 2nd, was approval. Voter 602. And that brings us to tonight's meeting for our public hearing and a vote of the board of Alderman. No remarks were received from the neighbors.
Dave, I can remember one application. I don't remember two previous or something like this. Was there two or?
I've been told there were two. I have knowledge of the one that was about four years ago.
Right. And I know that was a kind of a parking thing, but does a flood plane come into?
So two answers. The one from four years ago from Audubon redevelopment was approved by Planning and Zoning, came to this board. And then if you remember, we had to rezone part of the parking lot to I-1. We didn't rezone, I'm sorry. We had to make a zoning amendment to allow RV park within an I-1 that was voted unanimously. But the portion of the parking lot that they reused was part I-1, part commercial. And with legal counsel, we were, you know, advised not to approve that since it's not in an I-1. This board voted to table that and then voted to deny it and asked the applicant to come back if they wanted to and put it in an I-1 and they never came back. And I'm sorry, Alderman Bennett, you asked about a flood plain. This is within a flood plain. I've contacted SEMA. This type of use is allowed in a flood. A majority of state parks are within flood planes also. This use is allowed within a flood plain. Mr. Fahey applied for flood plain permitting along with the Levy District and were granted a flood plain permit.
I know there was a question raised about the security down there and people breaking in, but that wouldn't affect the city's liability. I mean, that would be all on the property owner.
I mean, this would all be private enterprise. Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, the previous location was up by Audubon.
Previous location was the parking lot of Audubon's as, and then it trickled back into the rock lot in front of the factory there. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Are you done, Aaron?
I am. I mean, the, this is on Front Street, so it's, it is still affected by juror fed area, but it's not down in the, it, it's a different location. I mean, it's a.
It is not on the juror fed's property.
Right.
Correct.
So this is an obvious answer that we're about to hear, but the notification process, those intervals that you spoke of with the media, the neighbors, all that, they, they closely mirror, those intervals are the same as the previous applicant, meaning this process is all similar to the previous applicant.
I mean, the process is exactly the same as the previous applicant. The letters are mailed as soon as I get the application, can process it, get any questions answered, type up the letter and send it out. Notification is sent to the Herald in the same process and the posting in the Herald has to be legally at least two weeks before this meeting and it was.
Okay. And the, the reason I ask that question is just to, we, we had quite lively discussion on the previous applicant's application, the whole process that we did have this time. And that's, there, there's no variable in Dave's process. So.
Wasn't there also on that first application, there was something about acquiring additional property and I don't know if that ever affected it or?
I, again, this is just my memory. Audubon's, I believe, purchased some additional.
They did.
Parking lot area in order to do the RV park. But again, permission wasn't received and they didn't pursue it after that initial denial.
So the, the ownership of this property is, is the joint levy commission, the city and one of the levy districts?
The property is owned by the joint levy commission.
Right.
Except part of it is owned by Main Street Inn LLC.
Right. So does that require any special handling of the permits to do that or is that?
No. In your packet is a contract that the applicant signed with the district, I'm sorry, the joint levy commission. He's already pursued that permission with this intent and presented that as part of his application.
So there's nothing different between a private property owner and the joint levy commission that requires any special consideration?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments in the public hearing portion?
I had one phone call. Was concerned about, you know, she was very adamant about, I can't talk to her, about not going through the first time. She was very upset the first time she got a petition started. There was about 60 something people that were signed on that petition to have the first one not approved. She's still concerned about that and it being in the downtown area. So I don't know if we're going to have anyone, I know past six to nothing at the.
Correct.
So that's pretty promising for them that the committee agreed to move it on to the board. But I guess it was that question about having that many people opposed to it the first time. This is a much different location and it's a little bit more hidden, out of sight compared to the first one. So I didn't know if we were going to have anybody speak on, on that and how that's going to, I know it's not only a city property, it's a private enterprise. I just want their voice to be heard, but there was some opposition to it. She's not an adjoining property owner, so she didn't get one of those letters. But she didn't know it was going to be here tonight. So she, she's opposed to it. And I know there's some other people opposed to it tonight.
Some of the reasons that were brought up in opposition were considered and factored into the conditions that are part of the special use permit. I don't, you have no, if, if not everyone has read them, it just talks about noise. There has to be an emergency evacuation plan, things of that nature.
Fire.
Correct. Well, mostly for water concerns.
I think campfires were allowed, I think, right?
So within city ordinance, correct.
But how does that affect with the RV? Because they're much tighter in an RV park compared to you can have a campfire at your house within 20 feet of your premise or something? I don't know what the.
Well, most of the city ordinance deals with the size of the fire, the container of the fire and what you burn, recreational fires.
Yeah.
But yeah, you should be a certain distance from your home. As far as the RV, that would be up to the RV park rules and regulations.
Fair enough.
And I haven't read this contract and stuff in here. So one of the things that was brought up to me was, I guess, the amount of time that people would be allowed to stay down there. And, and I know we've got another situation where it appears there's some squatters, you know?
That's in the terms and conditions. Very conflicting.
So that's all outlined?
Within the terms and conditions in the staff packet, it lists a limit of 30 days. That was our personal preference. SEMA says you cannot stay there since it's in a flood zone more than 180 days. So we limited that down to 30 days.
That's the same as most state parks.
Correct.
I'd like to, if I could, Aaron, can I maybe, I don't want to put you on the spot here, but with, from a tourism perspective, how, how do you, do you see this project as being a worthwhile endeavor on that side of things?
I think, yeah, I'm so glad you asked this because, you know, I. Oh, sorry. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Thanks for asking this question because I do have some input. You know, I, I try to get out in the community and I've put together, you know, different focus groups with, with our different partners. And the national park is one of the, the ones that could, not that they could be really benefit from it, but our town could really benefit from this because they constantly get calls that, hey, you know, we're coming in, we're driving an RV, we're hitting as many national parks across the United States as we can. Where can we, you know, park our RV in town? And we send them to Hawn State Park, which if they don't have a, a little motorcycle or something attached to their RV, they're not coming into town. And so I think, you know, one of the big things that people wanted out of the national park is that it was going to be a big draw. But if we don't have the other infrastructure in place, then it, we're hamstringing it. So when I heard Patrick was putting this in, I was, I was very excited because that demand is there. So.
In, in relation to our peers, is this a pretty typical, I mean, as far as, I'm trying to think of one off the top of my head, but in, in our tourism space, what we consider our peers, is this a pretty standard option at most of the national parks or most of these tourist destinations?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, that's, it's supply, demand, you know, when you have a national park, there's somebody that comes in and, and tries to put an RV park real close because, you know, the, the biggest one I know of, and of course they have a lot of space to do it, is Death Valley National Park. But when I tell you the amount of, you know, RV parking that they have at the, at multiple sites throughout, it's, it's, it's vast. So I, I forget the amount of spots that we're starting with here, but it's pretty small. But I, I'm pretty sure you're going to see a good return, or Patrick's going to see a good return on investment there. And people will be coming to town for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Another question for Dave, possibly Dave, I guess. As far as our city utilities down there, are we able to support?
We are. Mr. Fahey has worked that out. Had some questions for Alliance. I think he got the answers and has contracted with a local contractor to install that infrastructure. I would also, again, in your staff packet, I'm not advocating because it's up to you all, but this is an item that is called out within the comprehensive plan.
You know, to me, the location compared to the one that was turned down and this location, it's night and day difference and stuff. I mean, might look better than a Johnson Grass field too.
Any other questions?
We, we, we've heard opposition from different sources tonight. I'm in favor of this. I was in favor of the previous applicant proposing this. But I'm, I'm also in favor of everybody being heard. So I mean, the only variable is the location, right? Everything, the process mirrored the previous process. Everybody's had opportunity to oppose this.
The process is similar. The location is different. And I believe Mr. Fahey's plans are slightly different.
So I have to believe that?
The zoning issue with the first go around.
Correct.
There was a legal impediment to the prior proposal. And if I, I think, I think I'm on the same page as David. That's what really required you to deny it at that time because it could not have been approved under, for both parcels without an additional zoning change.
So location related? Is that, that's the main variable?
I mean, all of a sudden it was location related, but it wasn't just because of the location, it was because of the zoning at the location, which is more specific. And, and it makes this a completely different proposal. And that, I'm not advocating, you know, one way or the other, oh, what do you want to do with either one of them? Except for the other one, I think if it was pursuant to my recommendation, if I remember correctly, that you denied the last one, so they resubmit it with an additional.
Which they did not.
And they just never did. And so you never really had to file a request, a previous process legally. Sometimes you just, you just can't approve something unless it go through a different process.
I got one, one call that was, that was opposed to this. I think an important distinction too is, is the perception that, you know, there will be some favoritism because all of it is on the board. He was not on the board at the time. He was not a member of the board that dissented on that initially, just for public perception. That's, that was. that initially, just for public perception, that's, that was not the case, so I think that that needs to be mentioned as well.
To be fair, the last board just turned it down because of the zoning.
Because of the zoning issue, right.
It would have been fairly easy for them to ask for a zoning change, I don't know if the board would have changed it from seed, commercial to industrial, but, I mean, it would have been, but I think at the time that the winds were blowing, that even if they would have asked for a zoning change, that they were gonna get turned down, and I think, if you go back and watch those meetings, they're very exciting to watch you guys discuss that, you know, so, I think, I think they felt like, even if they would have went through that zoning change, they were probably gonna, the petition that got passed around, it had like 60-something votes for just, or participants in that downtown area. Yvonne made herself, you know, she went out and run for two or three days getting people to sign that petition, and she felt very passionate, and so did 60 other people. I think this location is probably much better suited, and so, there is no zoning issues, it's all industrial light, so it lends itself to be, it ties in with our comprehensive plan, and you guys know how big of a, you know, institution, a comprehensive plan, so I think it's probably a correct thing to do.
Dave, I guess my last comment is, you know, not because you sit next to me and you could poke me or something, but, you know, they've made a pretty large investment in a blighted area down there. In fact, I think the city's probably gonna have to upgrade their buildings down there and stuff, but they've made a pretty substantial investment down there, bringing a pretty blighted area up to very nice standards. It's hard not to go along with this, because I see more better things happening.
Yes, sir.
That's my comment.
And I would like to remind the public, if you did want to speak on this topic, right now it is a public hearing, so you're more than welcome. Go ahead, Mr. Brown, if you want to come up first.
Bob Brown. I understood David Bova, right, the maximum somebody can stay is 130 days. Well, if he gets a squatter on it-
Thirty, thirty.
Okay, sorry, okay, that, it's gonna take the court system a lot longer to get the squatter off, and Happy can contest, there was a squatter down that area, took a long time to get him out of there, and I just completely opposed to this project. If the Parks Department needs space, there's a lot of space on their own property for RV hookups. I just totally against, I feel he's being given special privileges to do what he wants to do, and if the board allows him to do that, I'll ask the people to boycott his businesses, don't go to his hotel, and don't go to the antique mall. I just do not feel it's fair that he can do it and others can't, and I urge you guys to think about it. I mean, they can put that somewhere else, go behind the welcome center, I'm sure there's four spots there, go on the property that the Parks Department have, there's room for four hookups. Think about that. Thank you.
Mr. Upps?
My name again is Teddy Ross. I'd like to make one comment about this. I've done a lot of camping, and I've been to a lot of RV parks across this nation. I've seen good ones and I've seen bad ones, and I tell you what, looking at other communities and camping, St. Genevieve D's and RV Park, it'd be nice if it was downtown, because people would be able to walk around, do the different stores and everything. I know when I camped away from the town, there were, most of the time, I probably didn't go into town. I think this is a good idea, but the whole thing is, it's based on how they run it and what they provide, but I, we need an RV park. Thank you.
Any other comments at this time during the public hearing? Okay. With that, we will close the public hearing at 6:55. Thank you all for the inputs. We have no old business to discuss tonight, so we will move on to some new business with a first reading of Bill Number 4654. This is an ordinance of the Board of Alderman of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into a farm lease agreement, Kurtz Farms LLC, for an agriculture operation on city managed property adjacent to the urban design levy.
Would you prefer a second? I have one question for, this is the same tenant now. Yeah, okay, that's it.
Any other discussion? I do believe I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Take us to a first reading of Bill Number 4655. This is an ordinance amending the City of St. Genevieve Municipal Code of Ordinances, Chapter 203, Fire Prevention and Protection, Article 1, Fire Department, Section 203 dot 010, created commanding officer as set forth below. So, if you recall, this was in relation to, I believe, the change we made at the last meeting-
For discussion.
For discussion. Motion to approve. Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Move on to a first reading of Bill Number 4656. This is an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, amending the Personnel Manual as set forth below. Would you prefer? Second. Is that a second? Second, okay. Any discussion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And lastly, we have a first reading of Bill Number 4657. This is an ordinance approving a special use permit for Patrick Fahy, Main Street End LLC, that will allow the operation of an RV park business at 198 Front Street and other property. Would you prefer?
Little bit of discussion?
Yes.
Would it be the city's responsibility to put up some signage around the trestle with the, with the height restriction?
I think it's in there. There's a lot to provide.
Is it, okay.
They do.
It is included within the conditions that, I mean, what we're telling them is make sure they mark the entrance, the exit, and that they would provide signage to us, and then we would install at South Main and South Gabry, or if that's what-
I would say on both sides of the trestle would be-
We can certainly do that, yeah.
Right.
I mean, there's signage existing now, but-
But how many?
We just had another one recently.
How many licenses appealed?
A few.
I watched two.
Yeah. Well, the ones immortalized on.
There's one, yeah. There's also a condition-
Yeah.
Yeah, looks like starting patient.
There's also a condition in there that Main Street End LLC also provide within any rules, regulations, handouts, or websites, directions around and away from the train trestle.
And I assume even signage from 61, I'm sure the way they've signed previously, they will make sure that takes place, yeah.
I say we put up like the McDonald's thing, like if you, if you pass this-
Yeah.
Right.
No, it's a good observation, Alderman.
Would you prefer? Second. Okay. Any other discussion on this topic? Okay, I do have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any other business to discuss at this time before we move into work session? And I just do want to reiterate the comments that have already been made, the Streets Department and their tireless work over the last few days. I know it's been a trying week or so for them. I know that they put in a lot of hours, and it's, they did a great job, in my opinion. I know there's still some streets to get to, but I think just with the nature of the storm that's, that's causing more than anything else, but I've seen them out, I know they're working hard, and I just want to commend them and thank them, and I know the community thanks them, so just wanted to get that out there so that they can hear it.
Thanks to Erica for coming in tonight, because Corey was gonna be here, but he went home to sleep-
Yeah.
-because he's coming back in at midnight-
Yeah.
-so they can start working on the streets when the storm gets here.
Does he still live in Perry County?
He's in Perryville.
Yeah, so he made about an hour long this time, too?
Yes.
To make that a little bit more of a compliment.
With no other discussion at this time, we will adjourn. All tonight's work session to order and move to approval of tonight's agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And we'll take us to work session agenda, item number one. This is a discussion regarding some property along Progress Parkway, and there is an option to close this meeting. It's been recommended.
Do you want a closed session?
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Pam, would you do a roll call?
Are we going for the first topic for real estate or going in for both right away?
We need to mention both.
For real estate and also for-
Personnel matters.
Personnel matters.
Thank you.
I get that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so right now, we have a motion and a second to close both agenda items one and two. Roll call this.
Alderwoman Dobbs, Alderman Fahy, Alderman Donovan, Alderman Bennett, Alderman Eidman, Alderman Rainey, Alderman Prince, Alderman Steiger. Motion carried at 712.
They're very short, they've been amended a little bit, but I didn't get any other feedback, so this is what I've laid out there to, as what will represent the city. So, again, what you have for the website, the mission is to provide, protect, and deliver exceptional public service, preservation, utilities, historic conservation, and visitor experience, and then the vision is, we will use the tools, software, and training available to achieve a high level of service to our residents and visitors that will enhance neighborhoods, advance connection, and provide a safe community for all enjoy.
Sounds good.
Did you talk with staff-
It's a little vague, but it sounds good.
Did you talk with staff ahead of time about that, pitch it to them, or?
No.
What is your suggestion? He wants to pizzazz it up.
No, I, I didn't give it its due diligence to really-
Hearing it read makes a big difference.
Give good feedback today on these. If the board's happy with this, let's move forward.
I respect Joe's opinion, but I think it looks adequate.
Well, he's saying it's adequate, too, it's just, could be more, is what I guess, really, you're trying to get at.
Have we put it into chat?
No, that's one thing we didn't want to do, because it was just copy off of-
Others.
I assume it came from there.
I figured this is, we are a small community that is a, is big in history, we have visitors who are big into tourism, that kind of covers that. Doesn't have to have a lot of words to it, but you can add more words and flower it up, but this is, this is the basics.
Where does this go on the website?
I may put it under the mayor's message about, maybe about section.
This isn't the same one you used up north, is it?
We did not have one.
Okay.
No, this is all what we want to ensure, highest level of service, your residents.
Adequate.
Just a item.
Adequate level.
So it starts?
Here we go.
You called it.
I'm just doing it for your benefit, I didn't all night.
No. I'm not sure how high the highest is, but I know we're high.
That's good.
To an exceptional level.
Maybe it's just that air.
It can always be revived, it can take time, I mean, let's just go with this, and if we get any negative feedback from people, okay, what's your suggestion, and that can give us ideas? We can, I mean-
Well, this doesn't get approved in an ordinance or nothing to where it's set in stone, no.
No, we're not, we're not into that.
Yeah, so, let's give it a shot. Is there any way on our comprehensive plan that supports that mission statement?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's-
Would you approve? Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
Okay, Alderman Steiger got there first. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right.
That's mine.
Any other business to do, guys?
I don't have one.
What's that, we go on to your?